Well, we're coming back to our closed session and we have a closed session announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss item four point one in this evening's special agenda. Direction was given, no final action was taken. The City Council reconvened in closed session after the open session component of this meeting to revisit items four point two and four point three. That concludes my report at this time.
All right, so we will be going back into closed session and so meeting is adjourned as, well, closed session is adjourned at seven twelve. And then now we're going to move on to a regular council meeting. Once again, welcome everyone to our regular council meeting for October twenty, twenty first, twenty twenty five, and it's seven twelve. Uh, can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Ready, begin.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please. Thank you. May be seated. Roll call.
Roll call, council member Ross.
Present.
Council member Paul.
Present.
Council member Wallace.
Present.
Mayor Prochem Samra.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, all council members and mayor are in attendance.
Thank you. Uh, next we have one point four council. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
For tonight's meeting, can we move the announcements and reports at the bottom of the agenda? And just bring them back up with the rest of the announcements and reports following city staff.
Counsel, uh, any objections? All right, uh, you have a majority. Sounds like a plan. Any, anything else? Seeing none, uh, moving forward, item number two, citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public when recognized by the mayor should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no actual will be taken by the city council this evening. Is there any citizen comments on any items not on the agenda? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, coming back to the chamber at seven fourteen. Anyone in the chamber? Any citizen comments on any items not on the agenda at this time? Seeing none coming forward, closing the citizen comments at seven fourteen. Next item, we have awards, presentations, and proclamations. Presentation by Adam Amaral, Merced County OES manager, Merced County Office of Emergency Services, Merced County Disaster Council overview. Welcome.
Uh, good evening, mayor, council, city manager. My name is Adam Amaral. I'm the emergency services manager for Merced County Office of Emergency Services. Uh, here today to discuss the county's disaster council. Um, and just a little back history with that is, uh, at about three or four months ago, we started the process of looking at the, um, emergency services ordinances within the county. And we identified that the last time the disaster council ordinance was updated for the county was in nineteen ninety six. So we went through that process, um, with the board of supervisors and we updated that, that ordinance. Um, and our first meeting will be, uh, at the end of this month on October twenty ninth. Um, so with that, we'll, I'll get started with the, the presentation. Um, and it's just kind of a basic overview of disaster council. Um, so, um, we'll go to the first slide. So the, the definition, kind of the disaster council under the, other than the Emergency Services Act under California code, is the disaster council is a local government body in California designed to develop and coordinate preparedness response plans for disasters. So the primary role and responsibility for disaster council is, is really focused on, on preparedness and planning across a whole community. Um, the purpose is to ensure effective emergency planning and coordination, uh, and communication within, within the community, whole community. And that's including all of our jurisdictions, all of our cities, nonprofit organizations, community-based organizations, schools, and special districts. Um, all fall in within the disaster council. Um, this slide here states it's required by state law under California, the California Emergency Services Act. So in California government code, um, each political subdivision may establish a disaster council by ordinance to develop a preparedness and coordinate emergency services. With that, once, once that ordinance is in, is in place, it goes to the state of California, to the governor's office for approval. Um, so no council has an authority to, um, within the ordinance to approve anything till it goes to the state of California, um, to be an approved disaster council. So some back history on that, uh, the county of Merced's disaster council was approved by the state of California in nineteen sixty. Uh, and that's actually public on, on Cal OES's website. So nineteen sixty, the county of Merced had a disaster council, nineteen sixty. So the Emergency Services Act, um, was put in, in, into code in nineteen seventy. Again, after repeated disasters, uh, and challenges within the state of California, um, the emergency services put into place to, to mitigate, to prepare for, respond to, recover from disasters. Um, relevant to the, this section of our government code eighty six ten, um, which, once an ordinance is in place to approve a disaster council, um, mandates the, the formation of a local disaster council, what that formally looks like. Um, the responsibility outlines the state's responsibility to assist and guide local governments through the standard emergency management system, the SIMS, uh, which we follow, um, throughout the state of California. Uh, government code eighty six ten requires counties and cities, uh, to form disaster councils by, by ordinance. Um, disaster councils develop and recommend emergency and mutual aid plans to ensure public safety. And the councils may establish mutual aid agreements within neighboring jurisdictions and states. So this is directly out of the government code. So for, for counties that have, that border different states, a lot of counties disaster councils will have interstate agreements between those, those different states. Um, the core functions and purpose, um, so this is kind of more towards what our, our, kind of our framework and concept to our disaster council is going to be in, in Merced County. So for a lot of the staff that have been working on, um, a lot of our plans in the last few years, um, from hazard mitigation planning to the emergency operation plan in the last two years, um, we've, we've taken an approach to, to make our plans multi-jurisdictional. And the purpose and reason for that is we're, we're a county that's very underserved. We're a county that has a lack of resources. So our capacity and capability from local government jurisdictions to the county, we rely on each other to support each other a lot. So it's, we, all of our plans that we have developed are multi-jurisdictional plans. So the plan that's coming in front of you today, this, the EOP, the city's annex of the EOP is part of the county's overall multi-jurisdictional plan. Um, it ensures alignment with state and federal disaster response frameworks, which is the standard emergency management system and the national emergency management system. So California is very unique. California is the only state, um, that has its own emergency management system. Um, every, every other state follows the national emergency management system, NIMs. Um, coordinate disaster preparedness efforts across multiple agencies, including fire, law enforcement, public health, and community organizations. So again, we're really focusing on the planning and preparedness component of it. Um, the council, um, will have a emphasis and focus on public education and disaster preparedness and training throughout our communities, as well as our, our own staff, our disaster service workers, and law enforcement and fire. Um, ensure disaster recovery planning is in place to sustain long-term recovery post disasters. So if we, we look at the history of most disasters across the nation, recovery is one of the biggest challenges that we face. Um, and, and if we put more effort and planning into preparedness, um, it's going to save us a lot of money on the recovery side. FEMA uses, uh, for every, for every dollar you spend on mitigation and preparedness, you save six dollars in recovery. So this disaster council is really going to have a really big focus on, on that, that recovery framework and planning as well as the preparedness piece as well. So the makeup of the disaster council, and this is out of government code, um, but I'll, I'll elaborate a little bit on the county's organizational structure for our, our disaster council. Uh, members typically include local government officials, uh, mayors, city council members, um, to city managers, public safety representatives from, uh, law enforcement, fire, EMS, public health, representatives, utilities, public works departments. Um, some, uh, disaster councils, it's community-based organizations, non-governmental organizations are part of their membership. For our county, um, in our ordinance, in the previous ordinance, we did not change any of our membership. We changed some positions because some positions have changed within our county structures since nineteen ninety, excuse me, since nineteen ninety six. So, um, the chair of our disaster council is, uh, our supervisor, your supervisor, uh, Jim Pacheco is the chair, the director of, or the co-chair is the director of emergency services. Um, different members from the county is the county fire chief, um, the sheriff, uh, and different department heads from, uh, the county, which are public works, public health. And then representations from the six city jurisdictions are the city managers. And the city managers under ordinances, and I'm not too familiar with the city ordinances, but from my understanding, the city of Livingston, the emergency services director is the city manager. And the purpose of having city, city managers and for the local jurisdictions as well as having people in authority at the, at the county level is people that have delegation of authority to make decisions on, on a lot of these plans and, and moving forward, a lot of initiatives that we want to, um, see happen in the future is kind of strategically for, for the county and the operational area. Um, coordination with other agencies, inter-agency and inter-governmental collaboration. Um, we coordinate with state and federal agencies, uh, that obviously the California Office of Emergency Services and FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, encourages cross-jurisdictional agreements for mutual aid during emergencies. So one of the things, and Livingston bordering Stanislaus, very close, uh, we can work, uh, Stanislaus has a very active disaster council. And working disaster councils, each council can look at mutual aid agreements. Um, outside of the fire and law enforcement EMS mutual aid system that are very robust in California, other mutual aid agreements, like public works and, and other special district type of mutual aid agreements, like transportation, school districts and things like that. Um, establish fee schedules and cost shares for planning, training, staffing throughout, um, the operational areas. Uh, one of the challenges we're seeing, and I know this affects the government, uh, across the board, is the decrease or complete cuts of grant funding coming into local jurisdictions. I can tell you our office in the last, since I've been in my seat in the last three years, we've seen a decrease to seven to ten percent of grant funding on an annual basis. So we're, it's, it's becoming more challenging for us to one, provide a service across multi-jurisdiction, to support all jurisdictions, um, just to even maintain what, what's required from us from the planning piece. So the EOPs and the hazard mitigation plans that are required by law for us to have. So looking at ways strategically, working together as a council to determine how we're going to continue to make sure that we're covering what we need to cover under California code and regulation and FEMA regu, and federal regulations, um, that's mandated by, um, those type of regulations. And it links the state's, uh, level disaster response through standardized emergency management system, again, the state's system of emergency management. So this next slide is kind of hard to see here. So, um, within the disaster council, um, I, I sit as a member of quite a few committees, state committees. Um, and I have, I worked for state OES before my time as, uh, the emergency manager of Merced County. And I saw the counties that had success with the disaster councils kind of branch it out a little bit more with, with committees and working groups. So if you look at currently, the, this slide here, it, it has four different committees and, uh, working groups within each committee. And this is kind of currently the, the work and the flow of work that my office currently works on now. Um, and kind of, kind of manages now. But with that multi-jurisdictional approach, we want more involvement from the different jurisdictions to be part of these working groups, staff from different departments. So when we talk about, um, public information, right, public information and alert and warning is one of the biggest challenges that we will, as government, face. If you've read or seen the news regarding the Palisades and Eaton Fire, um, all the negativity, probably lawsuits that are coming regarding the public information alert and warning, multiple jurisdictions crossing over each other with these fires. Um, we're going to work to strive to have, um, templates of messaging and working on multi-language messaging and that we can make sure that we're, we're meeting the need to our whole community within our, in our county. And it goes back to even with the planning and, and the training and exercising. So we, whenever we develop a plan, we have to train and exercise to that plan. And that's one of the gaps I, I think we've had in this, in the county for a long time is the training and exercise piece of it. And we want to make sure that the tools we're giving to our staff to respond to incidents, if it's in the field, um, or the staff working in emergency operations centers, that they have the training, they're equipped, and they exercise, they know these plans inside and out, and they're executable. We want to make sure that the plans that you're adopting tonight are something that you can use, they're valid, um, and, and something that's not just the, uh, on the bookshelf for the most part. So these working groups will be something that will ask each jurisdiction through disaster council to identify staff, um, to be part of some of these working groups and committees. So the city will have part, um, of that kind of ownership to some of the programs and projects that are come out of the disaster council. So the importance of the disaster council, uh, disaster councils are a critical element of California's disaster preparedness and response strategies, as mentioned. Um, they ensure the local governments are prepared for natural and man-made disasters. Um, we're just seeing the frequency of these disasters. Um, the magnitude and impact to these disasters are something that, um, we're, again, we're just, we're, we don't have the cap, capacity and capability at, to just handle it at a, a small local level. Um, so that multi-jurisdictional approach, and we encourage community participation and emergency preparedness. That's the one thing that if, when I talk to community and when I talk to anybody is I don't know all these, I don't, we don't know, my office doesn't know all the communities. We know the risks associated, but we want to hear from the community. So we, you know, we're, we've been striving to get out to the communities and, and, um, educate, but also listen to the, to the, uh, residents within the different communities about the hazards and threats and what they're worried about. And we can start incorporating that into community planning and community engagement and community training down the road as well. And bring that back to disaster council. The one thing I will note during, with the disaster council, um, the council has no emergency powers under the government code. So it's strictly emergency preparedness. During a local emergency, a proclaimed local emergency, the, the council itself has no emergency powers. And that's pretty much a high-level And that's pretty much a high-level overview of the disaster council. Thank you for your time, and I'm here for any questions if you have.
Mr. Ameral, thank you very much for accepting the invitation to come and provide the community and the council and staff here with some very valuable information. And, you know, we're looking forward to working with you and your team so that, you know, we have all the tools in place if a disaster was to hit. So, thank you.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, a couple.
Yes, go ahead.
First of all, first of all, again, thanks for coming out and presenting this to us tonight, and Mr. Mayor, we appreciate you sending out this invite and also getting our city emergency plan updated, which we'll likely be approving later tonight. Mr. Ameral, just a couple of things that popped up as you were speaking. As it relates to this council that's getting formed, will there be trainings coming, want staff from different jurisdictions get assigned so that in the event of an emergency, folks know what to do, how to do it, with like simulated scenarios?
Yeah, absolutely. So this last, in the last six months, we had an exercise, so actually the plans that we developed and drafted, our consultant that we hired to do those plans, we actually held a tabletop exercise, it was actually a flooding exercise that we did in the county to validate the plans. On top of that, I, I sit as the state, I sit on the Region Five Committee for Training and Exercise. So I'm advocate for trainer, I'm an instructor, I teach a lot of these classes. So within the, the last probably three years, we've brought in probably twenty to twenty-five different courses, classes, to the county, which are available for any jurisdiction. And we've had presence from different departments within the city of Livingston at these trainings. So to answer your question, continuous training, continuous exercising will, will, will still happen and be open to the city.
Definitely. And one more. This is going to be largely staff-led, and we don't work for the city full-time, nor probably should we. And so I am curious to know, from a council perspective, is there anything that you think we should be proactive about as these things come up and should be trying to learn or be in the know of going forward?
Yeah, I, I think having a, a good awareness of the, the plans that are, that you're approving, that's the one thing I will say, like really take a deep dive into these plans. And the reason I say that is, one of the challenges that we have, and I know budgets are tight, but we're not always proactive when it comes to resourcing, we're, we're reactive. So it, it's very difficult at times to budget for a lot of these disasters, but if you're, it, it, that's one thing I think really need, we kind of focus on, is, is the, the resourcing. We use a term, it's called poety. It's you plan, you organize, you equip, you train, and you exercise, and you evaluate that. So every plan we put in place, we have to, we have to determine if we can, we have the capacity and capability to, to actually validate that plan. If we don't, there's a gap analysis, there's a gap there, and we do an analysis on that. And that's when we determine what resources we need, right? Is it public works? Do they need more personnel, staffing? Is it more equipment? And that's, as a collective body and council, as these working groups work together, we'll be able to provide guidance back up to the council. We understand that a lot of those will, comes with a, a, a money associated to it, would be an agenda item probably coming to council for some type of action, right? So I think it's just supporting the staff out there with, you know, making sure that they're getting the training that they need and, and the support that they need fiscally and, and the support that they need just in general.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
Well, I just want to say thank you, you know, for coming out and sharing this presentation and providing a little bit more information on what this is really about and how we're working together with everybody else in the county to make sure that we're prepared for something if, when, when anything happens.
Yep. No, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good night. You're more than welcome to stay until we're done, but if not, then, you know. We're normally done until about, you know, eleven, twelve, so, you know, just.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Next, we have item number four, county supervisors' announcements and reports. Mr. Supervisor Jim Pacheco.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I do want to thank Adam for putting that presentation together. He gave us one, too, and as the chairman of the disaster council, I look forward to working with not only the city of Livingston, but all the agencies in the county on, on this, on this project. Couple of things, we've had a couple meetings, I've met with the mayor, city manager, and some of the council members regarding our tax sharing agreement. I think there've been positive meetings, and also our fire services, so I'm looking for that, too, to move in a positive direction and working with everybody to get Livingston in a good place. We had our Board of Supervisors meeting today, and we actually had a presentation on illegal food vendors and illegal trash dumping, something that's kind of become a problem in the county. And our Department of, Plan Department and Public Works are putting plans together to work to try to combat that problem, and we're, we'd be asking some of the city jurisdictions throughout the county to kind of help us out with some of the enforcement with that. If anybody has any questions or anything, you can let me know. That's all I have. If somebody asks us anything.
Counsel, any questions?
Whenever you get a chance, I, I mentioned it a while back, West Side, have you driven West Side? You know, the, the, the little, small grocery store out there on the county, right on the south side of Livingston? But if you ever get a chance on West Side, there's some great carnitas there.
Okay.
But you, you can stop there if you want, but right after that, in the intersection of Robin, is it Robin? In, in West Side?
Okay.
It's, 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 it's very rough.
Okay.
You know, but, but, but I think unless you've driven through there, and it just, it just seems to be like that intersection.
Yeah.
You know, it just, because all the big trucks, that's what they stop and go, stop and go. It, it just needs to be looked at.
Okay. I will go get some carnitas and take a look at the intersection. Thank you.
All right.
Make sure I get it to our Public Works Department. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next, item number five, announcements and reports, city staff announcements and reports. And I think this is where Mr. Jupjeet wanted to bring.
We can go after staff.
Okay. All right. Any city staff announcements and reports?
Good evening, council, members of the public. Anthony Chavilla, Public Works. Counsel, I just had three items I wanted to update you and the residents on. The first item, I'm happy to report that our, our city fared very well during the last storm event, which took place October thirteenth and fourteenth. The recorded rainfall for that two-day event was a little over inch and a half, 1.6, to be exact. Public Works staff did a great job preparing for that storm by checking storm inlets, cleaning the pump stations, and just ensuring the pumps were in working order. Second item, we did have an incident of garbage being dumped, and spread out in front of City Hall, the lobby, in front of the lobby area, along Main Street, even behind the City Hall. That did get cleaned up right away. Staff had to go out there and pressure wash and, and clean up. That did get cleaned up pretty quick. Third item, I just wanted to share with everybody, do you have a question? Okay. Third item, I just wanted to share with everybody about our upcoming, Public Works hosted a green waste disposal event. Location, same places every year, at the wastewater treatment plant off of Vinewood. This will be two Saturdays, back-to-back, November fifteenth and the twenty-second, from seven to four PM. We will be closing from twelve to twelve-thirty. Staff takes their lunch. Residents will be receiving a flyer in the utility billing first week of November. You can always go to the Public Works social media website as well to see the, the flyers and upcoming events. That's all I got.
Counsel, any questions? So just, just real quick, I, I want to thank you guys for creating that Facebook page, you know, it's, it's, I think it's very informational, it's very helpful. I know that you always normally try to send everything out to, at least to some others in the community, but it's, it's, I think it's very helpful to be able to have the website where, where everything can be sent out and, you know, people can be informed.
Yeah, we just want to spread the word. We don't have very many followers yet, but we're getting there.
So for everybody out there, is that only Facebook?
Right now, yeah. It's, it's on Facebook. You could search it by searching Livingston Public Works.
Public Works. Perfect. All right. Thank you. Counsel, anyone? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, to me, Anthony, and instead of saving for council comments, just want to say it now, Sunday, as you know, we all had our Nargitin. I would like to once again thank Public Works, great teaming up with our police department. The only thing that almost happened is we had a unmarked car, I thought it was trying to come into parade, but I realized it was our interim chief. I thought somebody was trying to crash the parade, but, and then Happy goes, no, no, that's chief. I said, oh, how you doing? And that's a, after you were somebody trying to get in, you know? But anyway, what the PD did, Public Works, and everybody has always, tremendous coordination, great job, makes everybody just do what they want to do and enjoy the day. Thank you again, as always, for twenty-plus years. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
One last question, Mr. Chavilla. Is there any plans, I think you already mentioned it, but just to announce it, any plans for the, the event to collect mattresses, tires, or anything like that in the, in the future?
Yes, we will be having a, we call it tire amnesty, mattress drop-off event that usually takes place in April. It'll be an e-waste mattress and tire drop-off event for the residents.
E-waste printers, computers?
Yeah, computers, laptops, fax machines, if anybody uses those anymore.
Yeah, all right. I'm sure somebody still does have some, somewhere.
Also, though, you, you don't have to wait for that event. All our residents, along with their Jilton services, you can call Jilton for, four times throughout the year for e-waste pickup.
Okay, and that, and that could be anything, right? I mean...
E-waste only?
Four. Four times. Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Yeah. All right, sounds good. All right. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other city staff?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman Miguel Galvez, city planner. Two items, this is one is, city staff met with the Mercer County Farm Bureau on September nineteenth. We had a very good presentation to the members there. There was about fifteen to about twenty members of the, the board directors of the Farm Bureau that were there, myself, the city manager, and the senior administrative analyst were there. We presented some policies that we're considering to be incorporated as part of the general plan update. And we did hear concerns from, from the Farm Bureau. They've prepared a letter, a copy of that letter is in front of you. The city manager had previously provided that letter, I think on October fourth, to the council members. There's copies in the back, so I just wanted to give you an update. We're continuing to have meaningful dialogue with, with the Farm Bureau. They are a partner in the community, and we want to continue to develop these strong relations with them. The second item, just a plug for the Planning Commission. As you know, the Planning Commission consists of five members and two additional alternate members. We have one vacancy presently on the Planning Commission. We will be having one planning commissioner term out, Jose Flores, and we'll have an alternate planning commissioner, Mohinder Kanda, term out. They have not expressed whether they're interested in serving, so I encourage the residents, community members that are interested in serving on the Planning Commission, to please submit an application for consideration. Hopefully, we can get members appointed to continue to serve on the Planning Commission. That's it. I'm happy to respond to any questions that the council may have.
Counsel, any questions? Good. No questions tonight. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other city staff announcements or reports? Seeing none. Mr. City Manager announcements and reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, a few items. One, one of the items that staff's been working on, that we had initially submitted to the state, and we had some comments, and so we resubmitted again, is, is related, is as relates to the housing element. So we're, we're hoping, keeping our fingers crossed, that, you know, the state adopts that. And then staff's, staff's also working on a body art ordinance. There's been, you know, quite a bit of, of discussion related to that, especially as it relates to some of the business, some of the space, business space that's been made available now over by Hammett and Walnut area. And we're also working on a vacant building ordinance. As you can tell, there's a few buildings around town that have been vacant for a while, so we want to, especially our downtown, we really want to reinvigorate, and so see how we can work with our downtown business owners or property owners. And also, the other thing is that we are looking to see if there is going to be any, I know grants are becoming, you know, really scarce in many different, you know, facets, but, you know, we're trying to see if there's some grants out there that can help us put together sometime of downtown facade program, especially for these, these different businesses that we have in our corridor here. And then lastly, I wanted to share with counsel that I, I got invited to be a keynote speaker for the California Economic Summit that's taking place in Stockton tomorrow in the late evening, or early evening, that is. And so I'll be attending that, feel very honored, and be, haven't been selected to, to be the speaker. So that is it. Thank you so very much, unless you have any questions for me.
Counsel, any questions? All right, thank you. All right, so next we have announcements and reports by the city council members. Mr. Wallace?
Yeah, just one, and I talked to Councilmember Japid on this. I've been in three or four of the parades, you know, I can't make it from one temple to the other. I make it a little ways, and then I have to either go home and get a ride, but usually I park where I can, I know how far I can make it. But I've watched a couple, I think I've been in four now. What I don't know, and I would like to see it posted on your, through your internet, what is exactly the meaning of the parade? What does it do? I mean, we block off a lot of streets, but what, what is the meaning to the religion? What's it relate to? I think there'd be other citizens that probably don't know either, and if I don't, there's got to be others. I think that's something that should be looked into and made, you know, tell something more about, we're having, you're having a parade, okay? What is it for? What is the meaning? What's it day to? There's got to be history and everything to that, that myself, I'd like to know. And that was my comments here.
I'd be happy to get you some information on that. A very, at, at a broad level, this is a practice that folks would do back when they were in Punjab. It was a, it, it was a ceremonious occasion, I'm not going to get too, too far into the weeds, and when folks migrated here, they wanted to continue that, and so you've seen that for several years. But I'll, I'll get you a little bit more detail going forward.
Yeah, it might get published.
Yeah, we can look into that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Wallace, back when it first started, about twenty years ago, so approximately, people were very curious. We did give out that information at that time. Obviously, we have a lot of new residents, and time for an update for our citizens to understand the meaning behind it. And, and, I don't know, will the local social media whiz kid do it, or we'll just put it out on someplace? put it out on someplace? We'll figure something out, and we'll make sure that everybody gets information on it. There are some videos from the old days, and there's some SunStar articles that were published behind the meanings of it. I'm sure we can dig those up and put them up out there, and, and there is a lot of local meanings to it. You know, the Nerkitin, the Hola Mala, it means the mock fight. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jabid, of course, you know. In the, in the village in the old days, there would used to be a lot of wars between different factions and different countries, and the Sikh community rose up to go help defend villages. And they used to go from village to village in a marching mode to show that you're not alone, we're here to take care of you. Hola Mala, that makes, means mock fight. It was showing that we're with you. That was the original intent behind it. Over time, it's morphed into more of a religious ceremony. Obviously, we don't do that anymore, but we'll give you a lot more details, we'll put them out on the internet for everybody to understand. Just to put it, Jabid, how many people you think would attend the one coming up in November in Yuba City? Would you say close to...
I haven't seen numbers on this, but I can say for certain that it's an international event. I would say, and this is me being generous, I would set the absolute floor minimum at 10,000, but it's likely to far exceed that. You probably have a better...
Yeah, I mean, everybody has their numbers. 10,000 is probably more like in Sacramento. Yuba City hits over 100,000 easy. So they really, really go large. Yuba City's international more than everyone's are more local. But we'll get information to you still. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Next, we have Mr. Jason Ral.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've attended the Food Truck Fridays, which has been excellent. Food's awesome. Jackie, that's a great event, and I think we should do that more often. I think it's a great location as well, and public loves it, so keep it up. Secondly, I went to, attended my Planning Commission meeting on 10/14, and also our tax share agreement on 10/15, and this Sunday, the Sikh Parade. I do have something else. I pulled a check warrant, oh, I'm going to say three or four meetings ago, and I had some questions on it. One, Jabid, it's for you, and it's nothing personal. I saw on there you had 3.9 hours with the attorney on a conference call. I don't know what that was about, but I'd be, I'd really like to know what that was about. You know, it was quite a bit of money on our meeting on 9/16. You stated when you approached six minutes with the attorney, you hang up. So I'd like to find out more. If you can answer an open session, that'd be great. If not, we're going back to close, we can discuss it back then. So, that's all I've got.
I would need to see a date and a time. I'm not 100% sure, and then I can go look through my notes. I'm happy to bring that back to a future meeting if you guys would like me to report on that.
That's fine. Date was 5/9.
Date was 5/9?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Paul.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended the Fire Services Meeting with the city manager and the mayor with the county, with Ms. Parcheco. There to have discussions about next steps for setting up our fire department and what will be going on as it relates to our contract with the county. I did attend the most recent High-Speed Rail Authority Meeting in Sacramento in early October to advocate for the rail, to make sure that they get through Merced. I'm sure folks in this room are aware of the fact that the authority released potential alternatives that would leave Merced out of the route. There are lots of hot opinions about high-speed rail in our area, and there's no doubt that the project has wasted a lot of money compared to what's been built. But as we know, we as a city and as a county are heavily invested into the project. Measure V funds, we're having our ACE train coming in with the direct intention of being able to get to the high-speed rail, and it's a huge economic driver for the region. And so I was there with my brother and some folks from the city of Merced to advocate for the completion of the rail through Merced. As you know, you're never going to get anything definitive in a meeting, but at the end of their authority meeting, their CEO on public record did make the comment that they would not only be looking to complete up to here, but they would be looking to accelerate the work. And while authorities at the state level can always turn around and rewrite the laws to have other things happen, I think it's really important and cool to see somebody that's leading the project put that on record and be willing to say that. I partnered with a nonprofit recently called Good Party on doing some messaging within the community. They offered free text messaging services where they sent out a blast to several residents in Livingston, asking to provide feedback to the council. There's nothing shocking necessarily that I'd say came out of it. I'm still working on getting that report curated, but they did say that it's something that they'd be interested in exploring moving forward, and I think it would be a cool tool for us to have as we get into budgeting, seeing if we get broader public input on big projects like that. And I also met with the Foreign Bureau this morning to discuss the last meeting that staff had with them and things that they're looking for us to consider moving forward.
Okay, Mr. Samra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't going to say anything, because I didn't really have a whole lot to report until I sat at the dais, and there was a unsigned anonymous letter here, I think we all saw this. And it kind of concerns me. I don't know if it's true, I don't know if the city is aware of it, but I'm going to go ahead and read this into the record, it says, "Letter of concern, city council meeting October 21, 2025, to the city of Livingston, city manager, city attorney, city council, city treasurer, city clerk, from concerned citizens from Livingston, RE, code of contact violation, unlawfulness, and loss of public trust. City council, city attorney, city manager, city treasurer, and city clerk, please accept this letter as a notice that there have been rumblings in the community that one of you or more are deceiving the community, are deceiving and continue to deceive the community. The word on the street is that a current councilor or two participated in unethical and illegal activity in the recent past. This person helped police officers obtain," I don't know if the police department is aware of this, "this person helped police officers obtain unlawful online degrees. The claim is that this and these individuals would write reports, take exams in exchange for money, therefore allowing officers, plural, officers, to obtain an unearned and unlawful degree, which resulted in to higher pay. We hope that the city council, city attorney, city manager, city treasurer, and city clerk do the right thing, investigate these claims. Don't protect, investigate. If this is true, it's a loss of public trust and unlawful. As a public official, you swore oath to the Constitution and claim, and this claim violates that oath." Now, this is the first time I'm hearing this. It is, I don't know, I really don't give a whole lot of anything to that's not really signed, but I don't know if this is true or not true. I would ask that this be handed over to the city manager, the city attorney, and the chief of police, interim chief of police, and, and the council to hold after whatever initial findings are from the attorney, the city manager, and the chief of police, if there's anything that needs to move forward on this, that the council be brought into what this is about. Because if we have officers which are getting higher pay for something they haven't earned, that is a major concern to us, and also if officers, and again, I'm not, I'm not saying this is true, if they're claiming degrees of they have not earned legally, that's also a concern, that if it's found out at later date, can it really, really endanger their investigations or cases? All that can come into question. Any public defender, or any attorney, or anybody can challenge these claims and say, if this particular individual officer, whoever, did this, are they really, really trustworthy, or whatever the legal term is, to even form a investigation, and are they credible, bring to have an investigation? So I would like for the three of you guys, and if the city mayor needs, or I don't know if the attorney needs anything as far as a consensus from the council, then so be it, but I would like for them to look into this one. Because this concerns me, and involves our officers, involves anybody in the city. It's really, really concerning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just have a few items I just want to report on, just real quick. Last week, I attended an event, a CONFIIA event, which is organized by the Fresno Area Hispanic Foundation, and they do a lot of our community events in, in the Central Valley. They've been in Livingston, and they have done some events actually here in the council. It's been about a year and a half since the last time we had an event here, but even they all started back during COVID. Fresno Foundation gave away some Chromebooks at that time for kids and students, hotspots at that time, because they were, you know, they were almost non-existent at that time. But I've been meeting with them, and we're going to be having another event here in the city right after, at the beginning of 2026. It does take some time to organize. We're planning to have at least 30 different resource agencies. We're going to send out an invitation to the county to see, to also come and join the Resource Fair, and we're going to invite a lot of our other partners in the community to be able to participate in this. This event is roughly going to be for about 200 to 300 people to be able to attend, and I did actually attend another event similar to the one that we're planning on right now, and they gave out, they provided 11 different, 11 grants, 11 $1,000 grants to small local businesses. And they selected small businesses that were, that were starting from different regions in our community, in, in the Central Valley, and they selected one of our local businesses, and I was there to be able to present the, the grant. It was provided to Rice and Grain Bagels by Consuelo Hernandez. You know, so she got a $1,000 grant to be able to, you know, help her small business grow. So we will provide more information once we have the flyer to be out, but probably it's not going to be anytime soon until early 2026. And I did also attend the Cal Cities Dinner in Modesto. I attended the Food, Food Truck Friday. You know, that's a successful event. Thank you, Jackie, and everybody else that has been able to participate. To be able to make this event a success, you know, Public Works, PD, they've been out there, and all of the other departments of the city that have been working together to be able to make this happen, and then to all of the food vendors that come from around the region that are able to make this also a success, and obviously to all of the residents. The first Friday that I was there, I spoke to some people from Trolac, from Modesto, Merced, El Nido, you know, not many people know where that is, but it's a small little community, but they were out here. You know, so what that told me is like, you know, it's, it's somehow they came to visit the city of Livingston, and now they know, you know, that we're, we're having this. How many more Fridays? Two more? Two more Fridays, right? Two more Fridays in October? And it's, if you haven't not been there, I make a recommendation for you to be there. There's all kinds of different foods. Some of them sell out within an hour and a half, two hours. So it starts at 6:00. My recommendation is be there before 6:00, because the lines are long, which is a good thing. And I also attended the Planning Commission meeting. It is not one of my meetings, but I always like to stay informed. I was there. I was providing support to Mr. Jason Ral, because just in case he needed a bodyguard, but everything was fine. And I also attended the county meeting with, for the Fire Services ARHAC meeting, and we have our next follow-up meeting, I think is the 12th of November, if I'm correct. And then after that meeting, we'll be able to provide additional information. But that's it for me. Okay, next we have...
I didn't, I didn't know if, oh, go ahead.
Yes?
We have a question on, Mayor Protem's, by reading this letter, was that a motion he made, and do we have to do a yes or no on it? I'm not sure when he worded that, that he wanted it to go to blah, 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 blah. So, a motion?
So, I don't know, probably legal, because I'm not sure if it was adjourned or not, or how legal wants to handle or respond.
So, we could accept this as direction from the council. We could take it to a vote if that's what Councilmember Wallace is suggesting, but there's no action being taken tonight, so there's not a Brown Act or an agenda issue. It would just be received, staff would just receive direction on that issue.
Yeah, basically, what I'm asking at this time, and just for clarification, Mr. Wallace and Mr. Mayor, is to give this to the hands of the city manager, the attorney, and the chief of police, to see if it's credible and needs to move forward. That's all I'm asking. I'm not saying that we need to, I'm not going to say we believe this, to be, not to be believed, just want them to look at it. I don't want to open up something that's not there to be opened up.
Mr. Wallace, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
All right, thank you. Next, we have...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
I didn't know if, if, Mark, you wanted to talk a little bit about Joaquin, the, the updated ordinance that he was working on as part of, you know, just kind of an introduction to council as far as the procurement process that, that we've been, that the council kind of already knows that we've been working on, but just a little bit more information.
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager. So, Mr. Mayor, if that's all right, I'll park that under staff announcements? Okay, thank you. So, for the next council meeting, that'll be the first meeting of November, I believe it falls on the 4th. The city, the city attorney's office will be bringing an item, agenda item for the city council's consideration regarding the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act in collaboration with other department heads. We believe that this would be helpful to the city for a number of reasons. Number one, efficient delivery of public works. So Livingston has an obligation to provide prompt and efficient delivery of critical public works projects, which are necessary to support essential local services and infrastructure. This, of course, is indispensable to the immediate health and safety of the community at large. Number two, this would assist with avoiding project delays. Delays associated with existing public bidding procedures, which require formal bidding at very low monetary thresholds as currently drafted, are creating an imminent threat to the public welfare by preventing timely repair and construction of facilities, streets, utilities, and other public infrastructure. Third, streamlined emergency response. Circumstances requiring rapid response, such as urgent repairs or replacements of public assets resulting from storm damage, unforeseen failures, and other exigencies, demand immediate implementation of the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, which will then allow the city to avail itself to streamlined procedures to avoid public health and safety hazards. Thank you.
All right, okay, anything else? Okay, so next we have item number six, Conflict of Interest Declaration. Members of the city council will declare an actual or apparent conflict of interest before discussions or decisions about any matters in which they or anyone with whom they have a close personal relationship could directly or indirectly benefit, or where such a benefit could be perceived. Are there any conflicts of interest declarations? Seeing none. Moving forward, item number seven, Consent Agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial will be enacted by one vote unless a peradaction is requested by a member of the public. The city manager or city council member, there's, there's no separate discussion of these items. The city manager or city council member, there's no separate discussion of these items unless members of the public city council or city manager request that specific items be removed. Public comment on consent agenda items should be limited to three minutes per person regardless of the number of items contained within the consent agenda. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven under consent. I do have a question on item 7.4, and then if I... Are there any other questions by anybody else before, in the meantime, I access the actual agenda?
I do have one quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Ramirez, on item three, and I apologize for not sending this to you before the meeting. I'm just looking through my notes right now and seeing that it was here. This is the finance department positions. It was stated that there's going to be some savings between what we had initially budgeted for the positions versus what we are maneuvering to now. Are those savings going straight to reserves from reserves of the fund balances that are funding these positions?
So, so the answer to that is no. It'll all be realized at the end of the fiscal year. So the savings will be within the overall budget that was approved, and then towards the back end of the calendar, or in this case, the fiscal year, staff will look and see if there's any other areas where there might be some deficiencies. But the goal is to make sure that whatever money that we have left over, that we carry it. So there'll be, you know, some type of carryover.
In theory, the money could be spent though, because it was approved in the budget.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? So the question that I had is in regards to page 48 of the agenda in section F, where it says design review process, and then we are adding, which is Redline Community Development Director, and we are crossing out Planning Commission. My question was regarding the wording of the Community Development Director. Recurrent, you know, if that title was to change, and, you know, and then somehow in the future, we don't have a Community Development Director, or if we have someone in his place, could we word it to our Community Development Director, or blah, 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 so that we don't have to go back and do a review and, you know, it just saves time. And let me see, real quick, I forgot my actual notes at home. I'm trying to look at any other notes. But on this item, that was mainly the main question. Or if it doesn't make any difference, then, you know, legally, then just leave it as this. But I was just thinking, because for a while, the city did not have a Community Development Director, and then we did, and then we didn't, and then we're like somewhere, somewhere. And so I'm just thinking is, because then otherwise, it's just only when we have a Community Development Director, according to this.
Mr. Mayor, I can chime in and hand this over to Miguel afterwards. So to your point, with the title of Community Development Director, that's one of those things where if the title ever changed or the role was empty, the city manager could designate or hand off that title to a member of city staff, step into the shoes of the Community Development Director. So there's administrative workarounds for that issue, but if it's the council's preference, we could read a change into the record, which would expand the scope of that, and the proposed change could be Community Development Director or his or her designee. That'll kind of open the scope a little bit to say, you know, if the Community Development Director is on, I don't know, vacation or something like that, that'll give us some more flexibility. Though again, in this hypothetical vacation, what would happen is that the Community Development Director prior to leaving would say, okay, I deputized so-and-so to serve in my role in case anything requires a signature or something like that.
Obviously, I concur. We were just trying to be consistent. Sometimes we call out a planning director, a community development director. At the end of the day, it's defined in our definitions, and in the definitions, we can also have Community Development Director and his or her designee, which is why I want to make sure we're consistent throughout the municipal code.
Yeah. And then also, I guess, I've only been here for five years, but I'm sure someone that's been here longer could have seen so many different faces in those positions. And it also opens it up to interpretation on, you know, whether it's legal or whether it's city manager at that time. So, but I guess, I think I would feel more comfortable having something more specific with wording now, and that is not open to a very broad interpretation, and it's approved based on what we're really are trying to accomplish here. But just, that was my only observation on that item.
My recommendation would be to go ahead and add that wording, that verbiage to that particular section, and we can come back in the definitions and come back under another ordinance amendment and kind of replying the definition of Community Development Director and kind of expand that. It can be something that's considered in the future. The city manager and the city attorney are in agreement.
We're relying on you guys to, you know, you guys are the experts. We're the only ones that do the reading. Just whatever you guys make a recommendation to the council, I guess.
So I was taking it to a, your question, Mayor, I was taking it actually to a different level, and that was if there was, if the Community Development Director title did not exist anymore, and there was a new title that, you know, came into play, how that would be worked into here. That, to me, is a little bit more important than, because I do have the authority to, you know, to delegate and designate. So how would we approach that, Mark? If we had a Community Development Director, and let's say that we chose to put a different title?
I mean, that would be, that'd be a relatively easy fix, though, for the sake of consistency and administrative efficiency, I would say let's not change the title, but let's say we did tomorrow.
No, no, I understood that. What the mayor's saying is not myself.
No, no.
It's, you know, you know, council down the road, you know.
Understood. If we decided we're going to eliminate the Community Development Director role, we're going to call the person Head of Planning or some other title, it would be my position that regardless of the title that attaches, there's going to be a department head for that department, and that person would be the functional equivalent of a Community Development Director. So if we really had to, we could bring another ordinance to amend that language in the municipal code, but there are more efficient, again, administrative workarounds.
That's right. Yeah. Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
I have one question for Miguel. You going to also update the Planning Commission's handbook to reference all these changes?
Did I hear you? Are you asking if we would be updating the Planning Commission?
No, not the Planning Commission there. The book that tells our guides, bylaws, that we all have. Well, I still have mine, and I'm assuming all the new members do too. But it's pretty old. And now if you're making these changes, that's going to reflect some changes that'll probably have to be made in that. Somebody needs to read that and see between them.
You're absolutely correct. In addition to, you know, what we have in the municipal code, the Planning Commission has its own policies and bylaws, if you will, that they have adopted, and it would be appropriate to make changes to those that are consistent. Is it required by municipal code to have, you know, Planning Commission policies and procedures? My understanding is no, but the city, the Planning Commission had instigated that. We didn't complete that. I can discuss this further with the city manager and the city attorney, whether or not we want to continue to have Planning Commission policies and procedures. And I used the word bylaws, I know that's in there, but it often comes up with, you know, the Planning Commission takes an action, and they kind of set up procedure, and we kind of want to begin to memorialize policies and things like that, as well as identify roles and expectations for the Planning Commission. But my understanding is that's not something that's required in our municipal code. That's something that started before I came, and I was just kind of moving that along. But at the end of the day, it was my determination that that was no longer necessary. But if the council would like me to move forward with having Planning Commission policies and procedures and bylaws for them to know their expectations, their rules, and then how to consider items, then we can continue to do that. We haven't talked about this internally yet.
Yeah, we'll make sure, Mr. Wallace, to make sure that, you know, there's efficiency here and that everything synergizes. So the answer to your question is we will definitely make adjustments when necessary. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? And then just real quick on item 7.7, page, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, before we move on, was there any consensus among the council in terms of direction to either leave the language as is, which would be, again, status quo default, or entertain expanding the language I proposed earlier? Again, if it's the will of the council that they'd like additional clarity regarding the Community Development Director and/or his or her designee.
Mark, do you have a, or, I asked this to city manager and city attorney, do you have a recommendation on which one you'd prefer now for efficiency?
Yeah, my recommendation is that we go ahead and add the extra language. That way, you know, more for the public, you know, than internal.
So that would be the extra language that?
Yeah.
The mayor recommendation? Okay.
Will we need a motion?
Do we need to just keep?
So this would be a, this would be a motion followed by a second and a vote for item 7.4, and I would like to add that if we're going to make the change, we'll have to bring back this ordinance back on the consent calendar with that new language.
Can I be approved as? Okay. So it has to be brought back?
Yes, if we're going to change the substance of it. Although my position is there are administrative workarounds for the existing language in the ordinance. Back to the designation of an acting Community Development Director.
So essentially, what you're saying is we're going to be fine if we leave it as is?
Yes, in plain English, we'll be fine.
It's, I mean, it's more time and money then to fix?
Yes, so we would add that language into the draft materials, and again, bring back this item 7.4 with the new language, so that the city council could consider and vote on it and pass it at that date. And remember, with ordinances, we have a 30-day cooling off period before, after passage for it to become effective.
And on top of that, we have to send it off for publication again.
Again? Because, whatever you guys want.
Based on prior comments, it seems like there is more energy on the council to be more cost-effective, which I'm all in for. And so if that's the case with this, I'm happy to leave it as is.
I'll second that.
So if we're not going to do anything, then we don't need a motion? We just leave it as is, correct?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify whether we were going to add or not add.
So we don't need a motion because we're not going to make any changes? All right. Just real quick, on page 332 of the agenda, item number six, I just want clarification on this item. There's a notice, so the language says, notice is given that on December 2nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the regular meeting, blah, you know, this will be, we'll conduct a public hearing. I just want to double check that that is correct.
Yes.
Yes. And then after that, then it will be approved?
So after the, so usually, whenever you have, you usually have two public hearings, okay? And so that's when the first public hearing is going to take place, and it's part of the willdown report.
Got it. Okay. Other than that, I have no other questions. So are there any other questions on the consent agenda items? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A move?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Who's second? I'm sorry.
Jason? Sorry, Mr. Roth.
It's all right.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Uppan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Semer?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
All right, thank you. Item number eight, discussion and potential action items. Item 8.1, city council, hold a discussion and provide direction on which projects to submit CMAC applications in response to the MCAG 2025 CMAC call for projects.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a continuation of the previous discussion that Engineering Department had with the council. So we wanted to go ahead and present the items for you guys' consideration.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. So as the city manager mentioned, this is, this is a continuation of our discussion from September 16th. Currently, there's an active call for projects.
Just one second. I know that you gave direction before legal. One of the items is the Arkalian Park project, which is across the street from my house. Just want to get on the record that I'm not in any conflict?
Yes, it would appear that the public generally exception would apply for this.
Thank you.
Currently, there is an active call for projects. MCAG issued it in August, and the call for projects, the applications are due at the end of this week. So there are four potential projects that we presented in September, and Monica's bringing up our presentation. So I'll go through each of the four projects. What we're looking for from council this evening is direction on which, if any, of the projects council would like submitted in response to this call for projects. So the, of the four projects, there's the Arkalian Park Path Project. This includes a concrete path along the MID canal and a portion of a five-foot sidewalk that is missing on the south end of the Arkalian Park area. The next project is the Wenton Parkway Path. The Wenton Parkway Path would extend, would connect to two existing sidewalk facilities in the area and extend a 12-foot path along the MID canal and along the backside of the Livingston Community Health Facilities. The next part, project is the Stefani Sidewalk Infill Project. This would put in sidewalk facilities as well as ramp facilities along the west side of Stefani, which currently does not have any facilities on that side. The next project is the Newcastle Pedestrian Improvements. This would extend a five-foot wide sidewalk to connect into the sidewalk that ends just south of Peach and the sidewalk that ends at the apartment complexes at Newcastle Drive. Those are the four projects that we've looked at for possible submission to the CMAC Call for Projects. Again, the deadline for these projects is 5:00 PM this Friday, so whatever direction council gives, we will prepare applications accordingly. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Counsel, any questions?
Well, one, sorry, Mr. Mayor, thank you. How many can we submit?
So if council wishes, we can submit all four.
And how many are we likely to receive or have we received in the past, would you say?
So right now, there's $8 million available countywide. We don't know what other agencies are submitting. In the past, we've received anywhere from one to two projects depending upon the cost of each of the projects.
I would say let's submit all of them, but I would like for council to consider a priority, like, you know, if we can only, if they can only accept two, then, you know, which would be the priority for the city? You know, kind of like a one, two, three, four. At least that way, when the time comes and you guys are there, you guys are able to bring that up and say, well, we know that the council wanted this more than this other.
And that priority can actually be listed in the applications, so that will help rank those applications whenever they're being evaluated. Yes, so we have Arkalian Park Path. We have the Wenton Parkway Path. We have Stefani Sidewalk Infill. And we have the Newcastle Pedestrian Improvements.
Danny, I'm curious to know if you, or Mr. Mayor, you yourself, have any of these that you like more than another for any particular reason?
Councilmember Upal, yes, only, you know, this is based on a lot of input from, you know, of course, you know, the community in terms of having safe routes to school, you know? And so, for instance, in terms of that, this Castle one would be, you know, a high priority for us. And number two, on that side of town, they always say that we forget about them, so the second one would be Stefani. And then, in whatever order the two remaining is okay, the goal is to have, you know, a wonderful trail and bike pathways within the city. And so the goal is to tackle all of the right-of-way that MID currently has going through the city, so that would be the recommendation.
All right, counsel?
Counsel, I will add that the Arkalian one is the closest one to my home, so I don't feel comfortable prioritizing that over another one, and I will likely support that being the fourth option, but curious to know how you feel about the others.
Personally, I think that the Castle sidewalk, it would be a number-one priority. And I think I'm okay with seeing what the majority of council is thinking about the rest of the projects.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If Castle's priority one, I would highly recommend that we do Stefani second because that's, it is true that we do need to pay a little more attention to this side of town as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So Newcastle one, Stefani two, Wenton three, and Arkalian four for me.
I'm happy to support that. If council doesn't have any disagreements, I'll motion two.
No. Has anybody made that motion, Mr. Mayor?
Not yet. I will entertain a motion if there's no more discussion. Actually, let me go out for public comment first.
Perfect idea.
I often get reminded not to forget about public comment. So at this time, I will go out for public comment in regards to if there's any questions in regards to this item. Is there anyone on the phone? 8:36, coming back to the chamber. Anyone in the chamber? And bringing it back to our dais, closing the public comment at 8:36.
Did we ever call for comment or consent?
I'm working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. So if now I will entertain, wait, is this, yeah, so it was by who?
Councilmember
Councilmember Upal, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Roth. Roll call, please.
So just wanna clarify, your motion was to make Castle Sidewalk one, Stefani two, Wenton three, and Arkalian four?
Yes, ma'am, and to submit all applications.
And submit. Okay. Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Upal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samer?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
All right, thank you. So, real quick, we're gonna go back to consent agenda, to consent agenda to be able to provide opportunities for citizen comments on the consent agenda, and then I will come back for a roll call and a motion again. So is there any citizen comments on any items on the consent agenda? Anyone on the phone at 7:37? Hearing none, bringing it back to the chamber. Is there any citizen comments in the chamber? Closing the citizen comments at 8:37, bringing it back to our dais, and then I will re-entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion on the floor by Councilmember Roth. Is there a second? Second by Mayor Potem, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Upal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samer?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 8.2, informational compensation analysis for engineering, planning, and building department. Item was continued from the September 2nd, 2025 city council meeting.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor and council, and Mr. Upal. So we went ahead and, if you can please, on the screen, Mr. Upal had some specific questions related to that item, so we went ahead and will present, you know, the information.
Mr. Mayor, just give me one second, real quick.
I don't see Mr. Baines here. He hasn't arrived yet, so if we can, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move on to some of the other items and then come back and see. There, this is it?
Mr. Ramirez?
Oh, that's right. Okay, then I'll go ahead.
If I might add, just because I know we're having, Mr. Baines is not here right now, I'm okay with the information in terms of being able to digest it. If council would like a staff explanation, you're more than welcome to request one, but I'm okay for us to have this discussion without the presentation that was planned by Mr. Baines.
Okay, yeah, no, no problem. I mean, I, of course, different department heads worked on this, and so I'm happy to, you know, tackle the different areas. And so, you know, my specific item, I addressed the item number four, so I guess I can open it up and we can go from there. So the first, the first question was, all the money paid to contract planners, contract engineers, and building department from fiscal year 1819 all the way to present, so if we can scroll up to that specific area? Can you scroll to where you, where we see the actual matrix with the? Okay, so I know it's pretty small on here, but you guys have a copy, and we try to make it a little bit bigger. So if you look at the grand total, it's at the very beginning of 2018, you're looking at close to $600,000, and it's pretty much the same dollar amount until you get to 2022, it jumps up to like $760,000. And right now, we're looking at just below $1 million for this fiscal year 2025. And then, let's see, scroll down a little bit more. And again, we're, that's engineering services. This is for the community development department. So it's fluctuated a little bit, you know, there was quite a bit back in 2018, which was $351,000, and right now, you're looking at, can you make it a little bit bigger? 271, yeah. All right. And so, you know, the dollar amounts here fluctuate a little bit, you know, from, it starts out in 2018 to, you know, close to $100,000, and then in 2023, jumped up to $175,000, and right now, we're at $210,000. Okay, Monica, so now if you can go back to the second question, scroll all the way to the beginning. All right. So basically, the, we got that information, and so the information, all the dollar amounts that were presented also covers number two. So number three, it says total number of hours contract planners, engineers have invoiced the city from fiscal year 18 to 19. And then the breakout, so basically, in those same matrix, the information is laid out. So now we'll go to number four, which is the cost estimate to have in-house planners, engineers at city hall. So if you can scroll down, Monica, or up, however you take. All right, so this one is, the dollar amounts that were listed for planning and building pretty much are those numbers that I, that we presented. But what I have here is, which engineering is the bigger, you know, the bigger department in terms of the number of folks that are, interacts with all of our different departments, so I want to come back to the information being presented here, but I want to go all the way down because I want to show you a matrix, I mean, organizational chart. So can you go further down, Monica, all the way to the end, please? All right, and then maybe if you can make it a little smaller? Okay, so I think that's good. So this organizational chart, I wanted to make sure that I provided to the council and the public, because this kind of gives you a great overview of how the engineering department interacts with all the other departments as it relates to public works, planning, and building. So you can see on this side right here, you know, they're working on reports, regulatory compliance, coordination meetings, and then all these acronyms, which is the capital improvement plan, the preliminary engineering reports, project study reports, et cetera, the grant administration, and also finding funding, funding procurement, wastewater, water treatment, streets, storm drain, transportation, sign plan review, you know, all the tentative maps, final maps, and all the reviews that need to be done and inspections. So having said that, now we can go up to the first option. Monica? All right, so this particular option, option A, basically outlines all of the different, if we wanted to cover all the areas on the organizational chart that we touch, you're looking at, let's see, 12, 12 different people. Now, of course, not all these 12 people are gonna be busy, because, you know, this is, this is encompassing everything, and of course, this is more than what we need, but that kind of gives you an overview in terms of what would we need to fully staff our department and still have lots of capacity because we can't cut certain people in half. So those areas, we would, those particular, specific professional elements, we would contract out, but I just wanted to show you what it would cost if we were to implement, you know, the entire 12 people that we would need in that department. So if you can go to option B. So option B here is okay. We're talking seven people in the department, okay? So we would be contracting out the city engineer, the senior engineer, that is, we would be contracting out the survey work, the survey field technician work, and the other piece is, of course, the facilities, you know, the building, and, you know, we would have to recruit, hire, and retain, and of course, there's, more than likely, they're gonna be unionized. And so that's about $1.4 million a year. Option C? So option C is five individuals, and so, of course, this is kind of, you're eliminating, you will be contracting out the senior engineer, the construction management, the surveyor, the survey field technician, in order to be able to, be able to get some really concrete work done, because a lot of these people have to work in unisense, and, you know, you can't just say, well, I just want to hire one or two individuals, you know? For it to really be meaningful, it would have to be a group of folks. And so this, this group of folks, which is five, would be about $1.1 million a year. And again, you have taken into consideration the building space and all the supplies that they would need. So this is the overview, Mr. Upal and council. If you have any questions or any directions, that'd be great.
Counsel, are there any questions? Yes.
If council doesn't have any questions on the material presented, I have some comments that I'd like to make.
Yes, go ahead.
So, Mr. Miras, thanks for putting this together. Like I said, I had a huge data request, and we initially asked for this item, and the reasoning for that was to make sure we have a broad sample set, and we are making an evidence-based decision on what is cost-effective and what's not. I do want to point out that we don't necessarily have to go with any of the models that are presented here in terms of one, two, three. We could consider bringing in maybe just one person, or maybe just two people, and still contracting out for some of these more niche services that are gonna keep us busy going forward. One of the reasons for dollar amounts on these requests and getting numbers on how many hours we're getting billed for and getting weekly averages is because if we have numbers on how much time people are putting in, we can compare that to a 40-hour work week that we'd get at city hall from people doing that same job, and then compare the cost estimate. You're essentially getting a productivity measure of how much you're paying per hour for the same services. And I want to focus on that per-hour rate with council. So right now, what we're getting billed So right now what we're getting billed, uh, and I want to do this for engineering and planning specifically first. Right now what we're getting billed, uh, from engineering, uh, this is from the information that was presented the first time around, it's an average of about 170 dollars an hour for, uh, the principal engineering services and, uh, the project management services. And so if you take that 170-hour dollar rate, uh, you go 40 hours a week for 52 weeks, just to get a full-time schedule average, you're looking at 353,600 dollars a year salary with 170-hour, uh, rate, 170 dollars an hour rate, which as we know, that's far more hourly than we would pay for that same principal engineer if we had a single engineer at City Hall. We would not be paying them a 350,000 dollar salary. It would be ludicrous, uh, we'd be looking like Stan Cog and that would be the most desirable position in the valley. Similar to planning, right now we are paying, um, our planner 185 dollars an hour. Um, if you take that and you go 40 hours a week for a full year, you're looking at a 384,000 dollar salary, which again, it's not what we would pay. And so rather than considering going all the way in, which we know is not cost-efficient and likely not feasible for our city, we can consider bringing on maybe just one individual in either of these departments or maybe two. Because we know work-wise, on the engineering side, we're getting well over 40 hours a week billed. So we can get that same number being worked on in City Hall, pay less for those services and ideally get a similar, if not more productive output, depending on the quality of the individual that we bring in. Um, right now, um, our, for planning, we're getting an average billing of about 20 to 30 hours a week, depending on the week. Um, and again, that rate is far higher than what we would pay for somebody that's full-time. So not only are we not getting 40 hours a week of planning services, but the rate that we're paying for those services far exceeds what we would pay a full-time planner. And it was mentioned last time we had this conversation that the averages that we would presented would lead to over 300,000 dollars of expenditure. So I'm, I'm glad that there were comments made earlier about being cost-efficient and wanting to dig into those expenses and ask that we bring that same energy and that same mindset into this conversation where we don't have to go all the way in. But I do not see an argument against not bringing in at least one principal engineer or one full-time planner because we'll get a lower rate and we'll get the same hours worked on. As it relates to what comes after that, I don't expect us to move entirely away from contracting services. It does not make full sense for us to go all the way in. I expect we're going to need a lot of assistance from our folks that are in the audience tonight. If they would like to continue working with our city, they have the knowledge, they have the history, they have the expertise to do this work and we will likely need that assistance going forward. And I do want to make it clear to our contractors in the audience, this is not personal against you or your firms in any way. Our job is to look and cover the bottom line of our residents. And if it's possible for us to provide services at a more efficient rate that ideally are of the same quality that you are providing us, there is no reason why we wouldn't move in that direction. And so I'd like to leave that with the council now and see what you think.
Counsel, are there any questions, comments?
Yeah, I just, uh, quick one. There are some positions I think, uh, that can be brought in-house. Exactly which ones? I don't know if I'm ready to point that out. Obviously you, Mr. Uppaul, you've done a lot more thought to it than I have so far. Uh, one thing I would, I don't think as simple as you think it is going to be. If you bring in a principal engineer we're going to contract out, there's going to be either, I'm sure, rest of it, that knowing that they're only going to get a certain amount of, uh, engineering work out to anybody, they're going to charge higher per hour service. They're saying since we're not providing overall, we expect a loss of certain amount. So our per hourly for the rest of it is going to go higher. So I think that would change. And then also, if we don't use somebody, it's also going to be where you're going to have to have somebody on a contract at all times to provide at least pay minimum, like almost like an attorney, a retention fee. Hey, if we, we use you, we use you for whatever, but if not, here's the minimum cost we're going to pay you just to have a contract with us. There's, I don't think we're factoring that quite in, in, in just yet. And also, uh, same thing with planner. We had this conversation some time ago, uh, Ms., uh, Councilmember Uppaul. We did hire in-house planner. Uh, what happens is, uh, on a small city, we can't match the pay scales of other larger cities, they come and go. And getting engineers come into a smaller city at a flip of a coin makes it very difficult. You would have no idea how long it took us to replace our in-house planner years ago. First of all, that person, uh, economy took downhill. That person is getting paid no matter what work comes in, they're getting paid. They just like, hey, I'm going to sit here, I'm going to get my 40 hours in a week, I don't care if it's 10 hours of work or 40 hours of work, I'm going to get the same pay. When city couldn't make ends meet with what we were collecting as far as revenue from projects, we were supplementing them through overall general fund dollars. At this time, most of the fees that we're paying is because some projects or something is paying for those. If those projects slow down or they stop, that call for hourly service, the hour, number of hours is going to drop. Now, I can see where, say that, and I don't have the exact in front of me and I'm getting older, it's getting hard to read that, but there are some positions I think we can do like building inspector, something that if they're not busy in doing something, they can be assigned by, uh, the city manager or somebody to help out with other tasks. City engineer is not going to go out and say, ah, can I help, uh, Public Works, uh, move a lot to, they're not going to do that. It's way out of their title. Uh, but we have to kind of consider this. It may look really, really enticing in the beginning until you dig a lot deeper into it. I don't think it's quite that simple and I think we need to have a lot more stronger analysis done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any other comments, questions?
I, I would like to address those comments unless any member of the council would like to add something first.
Go ahead.
So, uh, Mayor Potep, I definitely agree that we will not be able to get this done quickly, um, nor do we have enough information to move forward on something solid tonight. Uh, there's more analysis needed and we'll also need the expertise of the city manager to see even if we move in adding more positions, what specifically are we getting, what specifically will still need to be filled and how would that look, um, on a contractual basis? The, the thing I do want to say though, again, is th- this idea about if there's enough work for a full-time, that we're getting billed more than 40 hours a week for engineering right now, which means there are more than 40 hours a week of work to do, which means that if we brought in a full-time engineer, they would have 40 hours a week of work because we're getting billed for more than 40 hours a week of work, at least what's being shown on our billing statements.
Let me just interject just real quick, Mr. Uppaul, if I can. Uh, the, the only difference is that you, there, there's, there's, there's definitely more than 40 hours a week for engineering, but what's very important and that I need to highlight for you is that there's different expertise. So that one engineer is not going to be able to have the expertise to cross over to some of these other disciplines. And some of those engineers that we use, we only use very little, some we use a little bit more. And so you can't cut those people in half. Uh, and so to, to, so I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that information.
Yes, which is why we would likely still need to contract out, which is what I'm proposing that we move to. Right now we don't have somebody at City Hall that serves as the city engineer in City Hall, as the de facto, uh, city engineer. As we know, we have to share our engineers with other cities, um, which is the nature of being in a small city. But again, if you're looking at how much we're getting billed for hourly, it is, if you average that out to a full-time salary, it's well over what anybody's getting paid in our area. And so there's no reason why we couldn't pay a competitive wage. Now, will somebody apply for that job and decide to come to Livingston? We don't know. That's what we'll have to roll the dice and see if this could actually work. But numbers-wise, if you're looking at, e- even if you're looking at just one engineer, one qualified city engineer that can be here at City Hall, there's no reason why the math doesn't work. We can figure the other stuff out and it's going to take some time to do that, but I, I would not expect resistance from the council, uh, at, at least on that end.
Yeah, now, RC, uh, she, who's our HR person, it, she did a, um, pretty broad, um, you know, analysis in terms of what the yearly salary is for, you know, take your pick, whether it's the city engineer, the, uh, or the senior engineer, or, or even the registered engineer. You're talking about 258,000 dollars at, at the top end and about 218, you know, at the bottom end. So right now, there's no one currently, uh, in your, uh, in the books right now that makes that kind of money. So, so if, if we were to hire, you know, s- a city engineer at 258, that would have to, all the salaries in, in the city would have to be adjusted because the, the certain department heads, um, can't make more than certain other, uh, heads of the city. So just wanted to share that information with you.
Is there a statutory requirement on that?
Yes, sir.
So again, so let, let's review that. Let's see what it would actually look like. Um, and again, top end is 258,000, uh, which was what was presented by RC. Um, at the previous time this was discussed, if you bill out the hourly wage, what we're currently getting billed for that same position, it's 353,000 if it was a full-time salary. And that's just what we're billing, it's not including benefits. And so there, there is potential for fluctuation here. I would be curious to see what it would look like, um, with the, with the more nuanced model and taking into consideration some of these other costs.
Yeah, let me just share also that even though we're talking apples to apples, the apples, some of the apples are Fiji apples and some of the other ones are granny apples. And so to, to try to average different engineering aspects into one, uh, average salary, I would be, uh, it would, I would, I would basically be, uh, causing injustice here. I wouldn't be communicating what should be communicated. So the, the, there's, the, the engineering services, uh, there's so many hours and every, every week fluctuates how many hours a, a city engineer or how many hours a construction manager or an inspector. And so I can't bund them all, all together and just come up with an average. It's really hard to do. It's not really communicating, uh, what should be communicated. So I just wanted to, you know, share that because it's, it's difficult to, to lump it all together and come up with an average.
To clarify, that number that I'm providing is not a bundled average. It is specifically the billing for a principal engineer from Govea as presented at the previous discussion. So that's not a bundling of, uh, the several folks that they have working for them. That is specifically the principal engineer position. And I referenced that because we would be pursuing that if we decided to bring somebody in.
Okay, and also, um, Mr. Uppaul, I know you, I received some phone calls from some other municipalities. When you were, when you were at the League of California Cities, um, meeting that took place in Modesto, you know, you were asking, uh, a lot of questions. So I would, I would really love to hear what the feedback was from a lot of these other cities, uh, with regards to, you know, these specific questions that you're asking tonight.
Yes, I think I touched on this a little bit at the prior discussion, not the League of California Cities meeting specifically because that occurred after the prior discussion. But I, I was clear on record that I would be exploring what other folks are doing to get an idea of, of their thoughts, um, and the way they could see this potentially working out in our city. Um, at the League of California Cities, uh, specifically, I, I spoke with another city who had, uh, been contracting their services. Um, so what was curious to know their take on this. I like to get perspectives from as many people as possible to get different ideas, um, and also to just, to flesh out my own thoughts. And they were generally, um, supportive of an idea of potentially having a full-time principal here if we could recruit one, uh, with a hybridized model to make sure that we're getting all these niche services hashed out, assuming the numbers worked, um, and we could get everything done properly on the administrative side. Um, I've spoken to other cities as well in the area. That's kind of the sentiment that I've been getting is, hey, you're going to have a tough time recruiting, but if you can make it happen, this is likely going to be a more efficient model long-term.
Yes, um, the, the, uh, the other question for me is, what triggered, uh, besides the money part, uh, for, for this discussion to, you know, to be had to this evening or, or to, to just come up in general? Uh, is there areas that are not functioning, is just the money part? And then the second part of my question is, did you also express to these individuals your dislike for any of the contracted, uh, uh, contract firms that we currently have?
So the main priority here is the money and the cost efficiency. Um, within this specific conversation, I did not express explicit distaste with our current contractors. Uh, the mayor was with me in that conversation.
Yes.
You can ask him if he remembers. I, I would like to finish before, um, any further comments. It is our responsibility as a council to properly manage the funds of this city in the best way possible. So if we have an opportunity to improve our services at a cheaper rate, that is what we should be pursuing. That is what I have been asked to do by the residents and that is what has been supported as I brought this issue up. Now, what this was triggered by initially, when I first came on to council, conversations were had with staff at the time on how we do different things. And again, I'm always talking to people in different cities to see how they do things. And the general sentiment is that when you contract out for a service, you're likely paying a higher rate than what you would pay in-house. That, that is the general sentiment that I received. Now, in our Central Valley cities, we're not necessarily a desirable location and we don't always have the same resources, so we need to contract out services. However, that led to me digging in on, okay, what are we paying? If we were to pay something different, what would that look like? As you know, I like to ask a lot of questions. And after receiving information on this, I decided to pursue it further. As for, uh, performance, I, I generally do not have strong, uh, opinions on performance because I'm not an expert in, in engineering. I can't look at what our folks are preparing and be able to say, this is a solid plan and this isn't. Uh, but I do really like the idea of having somebody that's full-time at City Hall because no matter how much we would like them to be here 24/7, they simply cannot, they have other folks that they serve.
Yeah, the, the reason I asked that, especially the second question, is because I think that if there's any dirty laundry, I think it's always important to handle all those things in-house. And I ultimately am responsible for the operations of the city. And so if, if things are not functioning accordingly, I'm the one that gets evaluated. And then the, the, the second piece to that is, these individuals who called me, called me late at night to communicate that, you know, information related to what was being shared, uh, at the league, uh, uh, meeting. And so I just respectfully ask that any dirty laundry be handled in-house so that I don't get phone calls from different individuals who share information that, uh, actually is a little embarrassing. Uh, and so, uh, I, I respect everything you said today in this evening and I'm always looking to make the community better and, uh, and I'm open to any suggestions, but I only, the only ask that I have for, for all of council is anything. anything that needs to be had, should be had here, not out there. Thank you.
I would, I would like to follow up after the meeting. That's a fair ask.
Counsel, are there any other questions? So, you know, there's definitely, there's a lot of information, you know. I have read a lot of reports. Not that I like to read reports, but for fun, but this one in particular, maybe I was not feeling too well, you know, had like a, a down day. I normally look at the reports at least once completely, and in some areas, two or three times because to make sure that I get it and I ask questions. But, so there, there's a couple of things, you know, that I would like to ask counsel and if counsel can consider to continue this item to be able to... This time, I honestly did not have a chance to ask staff questions prior to today. I normally do. I normally send out my questions ahead of time, and this time I just didn't. I was not able. I would like the opportunity to be able to, I think there's some great questions that were brought up. I like to follow up and inquire, you know, and this shouldn't be, and just like it's been, it shouldn't be a one-night item or a two-night item because I think it's important in how, how we can either improve or, or find ways to make the, the city run better and all of the departments because one of the, I don't want to call it, one of the complaints that I had in the past for, for the, you know, for some time is that we need to find and fine-tune some areas to create development work a little bit faster. And this, that doesn't fall necessarily back into engineering or planning. I think some of those things were in-house. Some of the, some of the things that were, that were not in place at City Hall, and, and this is prior, prior to your time, you know. And, and so, there's, this is not a new thing, you know. And what I, what I like to do is, I would like to ask to be able to, be able to continue this. And I'm not necessarily saying to the next meeting, maybe in a month or, or, you know, to a future meeting. And, and like anything, it's, it's more about making sure that whatever decision we make, it's, it's a well-educated and well-informed decision because decisions should, should not be made lightly and just on the fly. And it shouldn't be on because, because what I believe or anybody else on the council believes, but because of what, I, I, to me, the way, the way I look at it is, this is an opportunity for, for others to educate me on, on, maybe there's, there's information that I don't have or maybe there's, maybe the information is here, but I haven't seen it in a particular way. Somebody else can come over and say, you know what, this is what I see. And then I can, you know, there's been times when people, the last person that comes to, to make a comment and they said something, they, they came with a different perspective and it's something that they said about the, the item. It's like, you know what, I never saw it that way. And that's what, and, and sometimes even the last comment is the one that has actually changed my mind. And so, I, right now, I don't have any, like, specific questions to this. But I, I do believe that there is, there's opportunities to grow here. There's opportunities to continue having these conversations. And, and maybe there's opportunities to have more internal conversations. And, you know, just, and then again, also kind of going back, and then again, not necessarily the, specific to any conversation, but I was there at the, at the Cal Cities Dinner in, in Modesto, and there were some conversations, at least with one other individual that I can remember. And I was part of, or at least in, part of the conversations. And, and I don't, you know, to Mr. Hoopall's point, if, if I didn't, if I didn't ask, or if I don't call anyone for references when we're doing hires, when we're doing, where we're looking at any item on the agenda, yes, I do, we do get a 400-page agenda, sometimes, sometimes 600 pages. We get a lot of information. But does that mean that all of the information is here? No, it's never gonna be here, you know. And there's gonna be times when I'm calling other experts or inquiring of other experts that, you know, have you seen the agenda or what do you think about this? What do you think about that? Because obviously, even with the five years that I've been here, I'm no expert in PD, in public works, or engineering, or wastewater plant, or, or, you know, any of those areas. I know some of it. I mean, but it's probably gonna take me about 15 years to really get to know all of those departments. You know, and, and, and so, yes, am I gonna be asking questions? Am I, you know, obviously now, I'm not the only one that's, is on the dais asking questions. But it's, it's, that's what we were elected to do. If, if somebody gets elected and sits up here or in any committee or gets appointed and is not asking questions and then just comes to council or to a commission with a rubber stamp, that is not the way it's supposed to be done. Whether you're elected or working at any, any of the departments in, in public service, if you, if you have a rubber stamp, you're, you're doing it wrong. That is not why I was elected. Obviously, the reason why I even run is, it's a whole different reason. But there is a few thousand people that, that voted for all of us here. And they're expecting us to do what, what they're hoping for us to do, you know. And so, I, I understand, and, and I understand your, your feelings as well. And I think, you know, it goes both ways. It goes both ways. There's things that sometimes, you know, we don't communicate to everybody here on the dais, you know, but we, we need to. Sometimes we don't like to hear it, but we need to, you know. But conversation goes both ways. It takes two people to dance. You know, sometimes it takes more than two people to dance. And, and I'm not, I haven't, I'm not one of those persons that will not share my mind because I'm concerned about I'm gonna hurt somebody's feelings. If I'm sharing my mind, it's because I see it out in the community or it's because somebody else in the community brought it, brought it up to me. You know, so then I'll bring it up. Most of, there's a lot of times where I even, I even feel uncomfortable. But I was not elected to feel uncomfortable. I was elected to do a job. And so, yes, I understand, you know, and, and actually, as a matter of fact, you know, and I appreciate that personally, I don't know about anybody else, but personally, I, I do have bi-week, I try to have bi-weekly meetings with the city manager. There's, sometimes we have a list of items that we talk about. Sometimes there's, you know, there's none. But, you know, it's, it is, it is, I don't know what else anybody else does, you know. But that is part of the process that I do, and it's not because, you know, and I appreciate that most of our meetings, actually, all of our meetings are 4:30, 5 o'clock at night or in the evening is because I, I, I still have a job to do. I, I, by the time I get into town, it's 4:30. And, and I appreciate, you know, Mr. Ramit is making the time to meet with me at that time. And sometimes, we do it on the phone, you know. But, but I gotta stay informed. I gotta ask those questions. And, and whether or not, sometimes, a lot of times, they're uncomfortable. But, you know, it is good to have those conversations. You know, if, 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 if you guys are not out there asking those questions or calling, you know, references or calling, you know, doing your own research on, on how things can go bad. I mean, we're, we're humans. We're, we're an agency. There's people that are gonna make mistakes. And if we're not there to catch those mistakes on time, that mistake is gonna become a big problem. You know, and for the last two, three years, we've been fixing a lot of problems. We've, we've been spending most of the time fixing problems. If we were just acting like others in the past, we wouldn't care about fixing those problems. Well, it's no big deal. I just, I just show up to a council meeting every two weeks and get my $300 checks typed in at the end of the month, and that's it. Then I get to dress up and attend some meetings, you know, get dinner and, and, oh, here's the mayor. Here's my card. You know, even though some people do that, some people don't even do that. But I take my job seriously, and I hope everybody else here does too. And that is part of growing up, growing pains, you know. So, do we need to have more, maybe, maybe some more conversations in, behind closed doors? Yes. You know, and, and I think someone here in this council, just to share, one time, somebody said, and I don't remember who it was, but it wasn't me. But I'm gonna share it, and they said, he said, I think it was one of the council members, he said, unfortunately, the people out in the community, not on this dais, don't really get to see 90% of the work that we do behind, behind the dais. People out there only get to see 10% of the work that gets done. And most of it is just, you know, a lot of times, it's just, it's, it's not visible. You know, yes, we don't get to build, we're not a big city. We don't get to build big buildings and big parks and big projects yet. But we're heading that way. We don't, you know, so, so it's good that we're having those conversations. And it's good that we're being honest. There's plenty, plenty of more things that I, I think I have to do more work on having more of these conversations behind some other office, not here, you know. But I didn't get elected to be, to, to just look nice and be here, make friends, you know. Unfortunately, it's, we gotta take our job serious, serious and, and, and every dollar counts. I mean, it's, it's not easy for the city to collect $20,000. But sometimes, some of us up here, you know, we're just like, oh, it's only $20,000. It's like, big deal, whoa, whoa. You know, it is a big deal. 20,000, 100,000, 150, 200,000. And unfortunately, not everybody thinks like that, you know. But I, I, I take this very seriously. You know, it takes a lot for, I mean, I'm not sure how many taxes I actually pay a year, you know, but it's not that many. It, it takes a lot of people to collect $120,000 or $100,000 or $20,000 for us to just, just think like it's nothing, like it's, it's not our money. Well, it is our people's money, you know, and we gotta be more mindful and, but I, I would ask for counsel to, to, once Mr. Samra wakes up and to continue this item, to provide opportunities to, to be able to get questions answered. And then we can come back and, and figure out what to do. Thank you. If there are no more questions or comments, I will entertain a motion. If you guys can support my request.
Mr. Juan, don't, sorry.
Yes. So, thank you for the reminder. So, at this time, I will go off a poll comment, 9:24. Is there anyone on the phone? We're gonna back to the chamber, 9:24.
D.O. Castillo, resident and business owner. I wanted to start off by, and I've been wanting to say to the, to the council this for a while. I think if you guys all agreed, there wouldn't be a need to have five council members up here. And there's days, because as you know, I attend these quite often, and I've been here for a few years. Some days, you can tell that, you know, some council members don't wanna look or talk to the others, and then next council meeting, everybody's playing ball. So, I think the fact that if you, if you disagree with the person to the left or the right of you, that, that's a good thing because then you guys are representing a broader, you're brought, a broader portion of, of, of residents. And one of the things I would ask you, would ask as a resident and business owner is that you work together as a, as a team and for the city of Livingston, regardless of your view on, you know, politics, religion, business, whatever you guys want, whatever, you know, whatever, whatever you agree or don't agree on, I think that's, adds value because you're representing the people that elected you. So, I would say, you know, going forward, I think it's good that you guys have disagreements, and I think it's great that you guys have conversations. But at the end of the day, you guys wanna do what's great for the, for the community. And if you're in that seat, you guys should be in that seat for what's best for the community. As, as some of you know, I, I was in the planning commission for a very short time, and it was my choice to, to, to recuse myself from that position because I felt that, I'm a business owner. I'm a family, you know, have a business here, have family, have kids. Very vested in the community, but I have development projects and business projects that I don't, I'm not, it's not stuff that I've been doing today, it's stuff that I've been doing for many, many years. But I felt that I, it would be hard for me to recuse myself on 50% of the projects and still be able to provide value to the community. So, I feel that if, whoever is in that position, you guys have the duty to make sure that the decisions that you guys are doing and, and the actions that you guys take are to the benefit of the community, not, you know, to one's own personal interest. And then just some feedback as a business owner or community on, on pay. And I'll try to make an analogy to, to maybe give you some background. When you wanna compare apples to apples, especially with salaries, I mean, you can go into a rabbit hole on like, you know, is it fully loaded, benefits or whatnot? But I'll, I'll, I'll pick a simple analogy for you. Why is it in sports, some baseball, let's say pitchers or football quarterbacks, why is the salary so drastically different? And usually, it comes with experience. So, I feel like if you guys are gonna go out there and retool and add more professionals, and I think it's good to have KPIs and kind of gauge, hey, we're spending so much per hour on X services. But make sure when, it's, and again, because of the size of the Livingston, I would say just make sure we're comparing or we're, we're taking into consideration the size of our city. Because I can tell, yeah, if you guys wanna compare someone that's doing a great job on a local level, go to the city of Modesto, Stanlos County, they have an in-house, everything, right? But their demographics, their, I guess you can say, their pockets are deeper than what we have. So, if you wanna compare yourself to a city like that, yeah, in-house is great. But I, I think on, in a city like ours, even, you know, some, some to the north and to the, to the south of us, most people contract out because it's hard for you or for us as a city to be able to retain talent or to be able to have enough workload for, let's say, somebody that's billing at a rock star level. So, let's just say, we do hire an engineer. Are we gonna hire someone that maybe doesn't, that, that, let's say, has a lower hourly rate? But maybe someone that's maybe, given example, let's say you hired me as an engineer, right? Because I got a degree, but I have no experience. And I say, I'll do it for, you know, 50 bucks an hour. And then you get the guy down the street, says, I'm gonna charge you 1,000 bucks an hour, but it's gonna take me, you know, two years to accomplish what that person has done in, you know, in, in, in an hour or two. And with that, another thing is, the, the group we have now, I just gave you some feedback. The knowledge that they have because they've been here so long, it's hard to replicate. Even if you bought a rock star on it, it's probably take them, you know, a couple of years for them to get on board of what's going on. So, take that into consideration. And then the, the other thing is, I'll give you an example. Previously, we had a, we had a, we tried to hire someone as a planner and without, you know, throwing any dirt. Nothing got done during that time. So, for example, if you're looking at, we're getting billed X, Y, and Z for this year and that year. But those years, we weren't, we weren't, we weren't pushing production. So, you have a lot of sunk costs that some of the projects that are now, now breaking ground today, like the ones on B Street, those were in the pipeline when, last time the city manager was here, two, three years ago. So, the city as a whole hasn't brought in new development, and it could be for various reasons. So, I also think, let's say hypothetically, you got a full bench of everybody you need tomorrow. Do we have the infrastructure? Do we have the water? Do we have the capacity to bring on new development? So, that's one of the things you wanna take into consideration when you're bringing staff that's on, on board as a salary. Because let's say, like, okay, let's say for the next 12 months, we have all these projects. Then what happens after those 12 months, projects are, after those projects are done? Do we lay the people off? Do we, you know, do we just feed them from the general fund? So, just take some of the stuff into consideration. I don't wanna, you know, I, I try to make some points here to, to give you some feedback as a business owner. You don't wanna necessarily just look at the hourly rate. You also wanna look at what is it that you're getting. And there'll be seasons in, 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 in the city and in business because they run very similar. Where you have seasons where payroll will be very high or contract work will be very high because you have certain projects like new wells, infrastructure sewer. But those projects will eventually phase out. So, during that downtime, the idea, the, the advantage of having contract work is you can idle the, 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 the pay scale down to almost nothing, right? And then when you need them, you ramp it back up. So, that's one of the advantages of having contract work. So, just, I guess, just keep that in mind. And, and again, I think for, again, we're still dealing with that water situation. So, I don't know, person as a developer, I don't know that it would be into the best interest to have a full staff of engineering or planning or building because there's no capacity. We don't have the infrastructure. So, you're gonna bring people on board. So you're going to bring people on board for 12 months, 24 months, 36 months, five years till we get some of this infrastructure in place, that really is not going to, there's not going to be an added benefit or value to that. And I'm sorry if I rambled off, but that's just, wanted to give you some perspective.
Thank you. Is there any additional citizen comments in the chamber at this time? C9 closing the citizen comments at 9:30. Bringing it back to the dais, is there any other questions or comments?
Mr. Castillo, I really appreciate the input, we'll take all that into consideration. Mr. Ramon, I support the idea of bringing this back at a later point, there are some things to fine-tune that were brought up. If we were to move in this route, this is going to be a multi-month process, even if we get into it. We are planning for the city for growth, something to keep in mind. Before we move on, though, we have a couple members of our council who did not share anything on this, so be curious to know if you have any perspective or insight before we table.
One question, Mr. Mayor. With the exception of Mayor Proten, I've probably been, I am the newest member on the council, but with almost 10 years on the planning commission, I strongly agree, it's the number of projects and what's coming forward is based on their pay. If we don't have anything, they're not billing us for anything. I see no reason at this juncture, we should even be considering pushing that out right now and hiring someone in full-time, because if we have problems with the water, there's so many things that we just mentioned that could affect it, and if we hire somebody, then you got to terminate them, lay them off, possibility of lawsuits, we're kind of famous for them. So I am not convinced, Councilmember Paul, that this would be a good idea right now. Maybe a year or two, don't know, but definitely not at this juncture in the city's time.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You know, to Diego's point, I could see if we were big like Modesto, but right now is not the time to do this move. Like I said, if, you know, like the first general plan, if we were a city of 100,000, yeah, but we're not, you know, we have just almost 15,000, 14-something, so I don't think it's a good time right now for me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, wasn't McGill gone for a few months, and did we have an in-house person that wasn't working out, and then we had to bring the contractors back? You know, well, there was a reason, because we couldn't retain the talent. What makes you think other things are going to be any different for a small city? To me, I'm not ready to move forward, I think I need to be convinced more, but I'm not ready to go forward this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, so at this time, if there's no additional comments or questions... Yes, so I will make a motion to continue this item for a later council meeting, to provide opportunities to answer, or have, or ask more questions, and then come back and make a decision. So I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Moran, a second by Councilmember Paul. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
No.
Councilmember Uppaul.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
No.
Mayor Proten-Samra.
No.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion fails by a vote of two, three.
All right, so next, we have council direction on future agenda items.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just real quick, I just, I just wanted to share that I agree 100% with everything you said with regards to getting information. It is very important that our council is engaged and gets information, and so when I was giving my comments, I was not saying in any shape or form that, and that includes staff, you know, to find information, because as you said, not all the information is here. So I believe in that, I believe in openness, transparency, and everything. The only thing that I asked, and I reemphasized, was that the point, that information, anything that needs to be hashed out, it's much more, it's very important to me that we do it here, and I only bring it up because, you know, several folks made contact with me, and so I think I would be doing a disservice by just staying quiet and sitting in my seat and not sharing the truth and what's actually happening. So I applaud all the effort, the time, the questions, and I'm here to serve, and so I want this community to be better every day, and I think that I've demonstrated that, you know, all these years, and I will continue to do that, and my motto is always service above self.
Counsel, anyone else? So we have council direction on future agenda items at this time. Anything?
Mr. Moran, I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
I had brought this up, camera fills a strategic planning meeting or the meeting before that, but to review our city's travel policy, I am aware that staff made internal amendments to the policy, and I think it would be cool if we brought that as an item to present and make potential amendments if the council seeks them.
Anyone else? All right, so...
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
For chief, where do we stand on the flock cameras coming and having a presentation?
Evening, Counsel.
We're going to count as staff reports, because it's not agenda, but, right? But it should be fine. Go ahead.
Yeah, so November 4th, we'll be bringing it back for discussion, there'll also be a flock representative at that time, and we'll have some information.
Will they, during their presentation, are they going to show anything? A picture of anything?
I don't believe so, but we can check.
I've talked to the city manager on this. Use my license plate, take a picture of me on any one of your cameras, and use that as a local point to show. I want to know exactly what it shows of me driving to one of your cameras, I don't care which day or which car, you can look up both my plates, and I just want to see what it shows, and let the public see what it showed.
Okay.
And you have my permission to do that.
All right, I'll let them know. Thank you.
All right, anything else before we adjourn? So we are adjourning into closed session at 9:38. You guys are more than welcome to wait for us. Not sure how long it's going to take, so we're going to head back into closed session, 9:38.